At 7:30 PM via the Zoom virtual platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The meeting notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and our video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall bulletin board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. Roll call.
Um, do we want to administer?
I'm sorry, before we call roll, we can administer the oath. So I will call on Mr. Bouzak or can Eric do it directly?
I can do it. You have the oath of office there? Oh, I'm sorry.
You're muted.
That was your unmute.
You're asking me?
Yes, do you have?
I'm sorry.
Office, that's all right.
I do.
All right, if you can have it before you. And repeat after me, raise your right hand, please, so I can see that. I, Deborah Nevis.
I, Deborah Nevis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
To the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Alternate Number One of the Milburn Township Planning Board.
All the duties of the Office of Alternate Number One of the Milburn Township Planning Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you can put your hand down if you if you can just sign the document, I want to see you sign it because I have to. I have to notarize your signature.
Hold on.
The line.
Just to clarify, I believe she's the alternate two, Sweeney is our alternate one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sweeney, I didn't mean to. Ms. Nevis, you are alternate number two, that's my error.
Alternate number two, okay.
Thank you. Very good. If you can scan that and to Eileen or scan, I guess scan it to Eileen and then she'll get it to me. And get your originally signed one to Eileen and she'll get that to me as well.
Got it.
Very good, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Diane Eggwell?
There she is here. Diane, we don't see you and you didn't, okay, okay.
Hit the wrong button, I am here.
Okay, that's okay, thank you.
Guest on Halpert?
Here.
Mark Mattsall?
Here.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
SuJatha Sean?
Here.
Sweeney Vijay?
Here.
Deborah Nevis?
Here.
Vice Chair Daniel Bear?
Here.
Chairwoman Beth Saul?
Here, thank you. We have one set of minutes from our January 5th meeting, which were distributed for any comment and hopefully approval. Did anybody upon review of the January 5th minutes have any edits or changes and Eileen, did you receive any changes that?
Did not, no.
Wanted to make, okay. Great, it was.
Guest on has a comment guest on.
Yes, actually, at the top of the second page, the meeting was turned over to Chairwoman Beth Saul, who nominated Daniel Bear for Vice Chairwoman of the zoning board.
Fix that, sorry. Sorry, Dan.
What happens when you're not here?
For sure. Thank you, good test, guest on. Great, and seeing as I think both Dan and also Deborah were not in attendance at that meeting, so they will not vote on the minutes for approval, but does anybody want to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 5th? Thanks, Mark, and a second. I will second. All in favor? Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, and we will have Dan as well as Deborah. Okay, meeting minutes of January 5th with the one change approved. Thank you. We will be hearing application 21007 tonight, but before we jump in and bring in everybody, Ed, I wanted to see if you could provide a brief explanation of the reason for 21009 being withdrawn and moved to March 2nd.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant provided notice, it was a very comprehensive notice and lengthy notice. Eileen had reviewed it and raised a couple of questions, sent it over to me, I reviewed it as well, found additional issues, when I looked at them further, I was satisfied that they were what I'll call fatal errors, such that the board would not have jurisdiction to hear the case. I corresponded with the applicant for the last couple of days, going back and forth. While they did not necessarily agree with my analysis, they ultimately acquiesced and agreed that they would renotice, make the corrections that we felt needed to be made, and the matter will be heard on March 2nd. We don't need to announce that, even though I just have, I think the Chair did, but there will be new notice provided by the applicant that will correct the deficiencies that we had pointed out. So with that, we can move on to the only application tonight, I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you, and just for clarification, I believe everybody understands when counsel is using the word notice, he's referencing the public notice as is printed in newspapers and provided to, as well as the written notice that arrived in, I guess, postal mail to those neighbors within 200 feet of the boundary. That's what we mean by notice and we wanted to make sure it was sufficient and accurate, and we had some concerns about that, so they will be renoticing and we will hear them in about two weeks' time. So just in case there were any questions of why we are not hearing that tonight. That said, thank you for that counsel, and we'd like to invite, it looks like Mr. Sisillo, you're with us. We're going to continue our hearing of application 21007, which began, that is the one that we heard on January 5th of 2022. Before we begin, I would like to ask Mrs. Nevis, our newly minted planning board member, I don't know if you listened to that meeting in full and feel prepared, you did, okay. Eric, does she need to swear to that, or we just have the, or I guess counsel, I guess, Ed, I should ask you.
Yeah. Eileen has a certification, do you not, Eileen?
I do, and I checked, Dan Bear also watched the video, so he's eligible, so I'll get those certifications out to them for their signatures as well.
Wonderful, thank you, okay, so everybody in attendance tonight can hear and vote on the application, if hopefully we do get to that point, okay, thank you for both confirming. Mr. Sisillo, I'm not seeing you yet, but I think you should be in here.
I, I'm hearing you, but I don't see myself either.
Hmm.
On the left of your Zoom screen?
Yeah, I don't know if you're on the screen and you see that little, the little movie icon for your video, or if you.
Movie icon.
You know, the video.
It's down like on the bottom left.
It's usually on the lower.
Oh, I see it, oh yeah. Thank you.
There you go. I brought Mr. Keller over, I don't know if there's anyone else you'd like brought over right now, or?
Just Mr. Keller, thank you. Mr. Keller?
Good evening.
You're still under oath, correct, Mr. Bouzak? Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not under oath, but I believe Mr. Keller is still under oath. Thank you. Mr. Keller, can you tell the board what variances the applicant requires for approval tonight?
Yes, we need two variances this evening, the first is for parking, where 32 off-street parking spaces are required, we're proposing 10, so there's a 22-car parking deficiency. And secondly, we need a variance from a section of the sign ordinance, where wall-mounted graphics, in this case, extend above the line of the second floor, and that was the sign number three that goes over the entry to the driveway entry.
Thank you, Mr. Keller, let's focus on the parking variance first. What proofs for the board do you have that they may grant this requested parking variance?
Certainly, we see the parking variance can be approved under both C1 and C2 criteria, the municipal land use law, C1 being where the relatively small lot size cannot accommodate any reasonable infill development and meet the parking requirements of the proposed use. Basically, any viable proposed development will require parking variance, given the size of this infill parcel, again, as I indicated last time, we don't have the luxury of a two-acre parcel that runs between two or three streets, it's an infill development, and it's just not large enough to both create a viable usable building and create the necessary amount of parking, unless you're just going to create a parking lot. Under C2, this applies where the purposes of the Land Use Act are advanced and the benefits of the project outweigh any potential development. And the purposes of the Act under municipal land use law 4055D2, starting off with D2A, is this project advances general welfare. The project with the parking deviation allows development of the property in a manner that is actually consistent with the master plan and the downtown vision plan, and I'll get to that more in my negative criteria. The project provides for adequate air, light, and open space. The design is contextual and it's massing relative to its neighbors. The project promotes the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, that's Section E of 4055D2. This project actually puts residents and workers into the downtown. A lot of planners like to use that term walking wallets, I never liked that term, but it puts repeat captive shoppers into the downtown. It provides the opportunity for live-work arrangements between the second-floor offices and the third-floor apartments, and it also provides for quality retail space, which the vision plan projects will continue to be in demand if the quality of the downtown is improved. The Section G of the purposes of the Land Use Act is to provide for sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of residential retail, I'm sorry, residential commercial uses to meet the needs of the community and all New Jersey citizens. This creates an opportunity for young professionals to come into the community, where they will likely stay and buy a home when they decide to start a family, and allows for retirees and empty nesters to remain within the community. So provides a housing typology as well as that's needed within the community, desired within the community, and also provides commercial uses that are sought after and consistent with the findings of the vision plan. It also promotes a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic arrangements, I think is the exact wording. And that is, it is an attractive infill project, and certainly more attractive than the buildings that were removed from the site back in, back in September of 2021. The additional net benefits to the community are also offered through the implementation of a stormwater management plan that will reduce the amount of stormwater runoff coming from the site, and the inclusion of vehicle charging stations on the property, both are further benefits to the community. With regard to the negative criteria, and I'm going to just talk about the first prong for both these two variances, and then I'll get to the second prong later. The first prong is that the variance, we need to demonstrate the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. We don't believe there's any detriment, let alone a substantial detriment to the public good. This project is completely consistent with the master plan and downtown vision plan and good planning principles. With regard to the parking, the project requires a parking variance where 32 spaces are required and 10 are proposed. As our parking consultant, traffic expert pointed out, the 32-space requirement did not reflect any of the reductions for use of nearby mass transit, that being the Milburn train station, which is common on urban or transit approximate projects such as this. So we have a deficiency of 22 parking spaces. The study that Mr. Malz presented demonstrates that there is more than adequate history of inventory, excuse me, of public parking in both the localized study area that Mr. Malz referred to, as well as the broader study area, and that was not the entire downtown. It was still sort of a limited, both broad area and the limited area were actually still within a short distance of the property. And the demonstrated that the public-measured paystation parking along the street and municipal lots four and five could easily accommodate the 22-car deficiency on their own. Additionally, the permit-only parking lots had more vacant spaces available in all-time periods than the 22-car parking variance requires. So that was municipal parking lots four and six, which were the permit lots. So there's more than adequate parking, public parking in the localized vicinity to handle customers and/or visitors to the project, and there's more than adequate permit parking to accommodate employees or residents that may have more than one car. Again, as we indicated, all leases will assign one onsite parking space for each of the three apartments, and two onsite spaces for each of the three offices. The retail tenants will be required to buy parking permits for their employees to drive, and the, as was indicated, shoppers will use available public parking, which is what we want them to do in the downtown, it's what you create a pedestrian-oriented downtown for, so that those shoppers will park at one place and they will walk past other shops and businesses and services to patronize those uses. So certainly, we think the parking study demonstrated that there's no negative impact created by the parking on the downtown. And I'll save the second prong, which is conformance with the master plan and zoning plan, after I do the criteria for the signage.
Mr. Keller, then tell us about what proofs can you offer this board to grant the sign variance that's requested?
Certainly, we need a variance for wall-mounted graphics that extend above the line of the second floor. That is namely what was referred to as sign number three, which was the name of the building. I can, I don't think I need to share my screen, I can go back to the perspective if it helps any of the board members, but this was the sign that was in the detailed banding right above the driveway entries, maybe I will share my screen.
I would say, yeah, please do share, I think for everybody's benefit. I know which one you mean, but.
Yeah, it's been a while.
And let's reference the drawing number, if we can do that.
This is Exhibit A7, which was sheet A, hold on, make sure I got that right. This was she, this was applicant's Exhibit A7, which was sheet A11 in the architect set. And this is the sign, we indicated that there are three signs, one over each of the two retail entries. There will be one building name sign that would go into the architectural detailing that sits just below the second-floor windows and right above the driveway entrance into the parking in the rear. The sign that was on the east-facing portion of the building would be eliminated because we needed a variance for that, so that went away. This is solely pertaining to the building name sign that is shown on the rendering at the center. And the with regard to the criteria in support of it, let me just go to my notes here to make sure I don't miss anything. The this, we believe, can be approved under C2, where the purposes of the Land Use Act are advanced and the benefits of the project outweigh any potential detriment. This is also known as the flexible C2 variance, where the proposed plan with the deviation represents a better planning alternative than one that is fully conforming. Again, the purposes of the Land Use Act that are advanced is general welfare, that's number one under 4055D2, or it's Section A, excuse me. This provides a logical distinction between the between the first-floor retail spaces, which I'm highlighting, so that people don't get confused and they're not looking for the offices or the apartments, they know that these two doors are for each of the two indicated retail tenants, and by having a building name, it draws people down into the side-loaded entrance into the elevator and lobby four to get access to the second floor, and it does sit on that mass that sits back six feet from the face of the building, as we talked about, the building is contextual and it's massing and that it stepped back to sort of meet and not overwhelm or rob any airlight or open space from the adjacent Schoolhouse Plaza building, and the coloring of the building also indicates that it's a separate kind of entity that sits over the top of the retail space, even though the second floor does have offices in it. So by putting the building in that location, we think it serves a valid purpose, and it increases the general welfare by allowing people to understand where they're going and not confuse the two. It also promotes a desirable visual environment through the creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements, and the signage, I think, is attractive. It is placed within the architectural banding, so even though it is above that start of the second floor, it's really in the second-floor plate, so it's not really above the second floor, but it's not on the first floor, it's in a little space, but it's celebrated architecturally as the appropriate spot for the building. And it's attractively, I think it's attractively scaled. With regard to the negative criteria, again, that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. The signage in aggregate, the amount of signage in terms of square footage on the entire building is well under that permitted by code. This is very discreet and tasteful signage. The signage helps to identify the building, as I said, it differentiates the office and residential portion versus the retail. It is a playful harkening back to the age when all buildings were named, and it allows for a building, and we don't know what the name of the building would be yet, but in addition to the two retail spaces, there would be a building name that we applied to it, so you can say, you know, we're coming to the whatever, fill-in-the-blank building, and that would be the location where you would access the offices and the apartments. The signage is only marginally above the first-floor portion of the building that is set back six feet from the retail mass. I don't think anyone would consider that to be out of character or strange, it's not up into this true second floor, it's just in that spanter between the two. And as I said, it's really in the place that's most architecturally appropriate. With regard to the, I can stop sharing now. Take that down, screen in front of me again. Okay, with regard to the second prong of the negative criteria required for all variances, and that is that we need to demonstrate that the project will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. We believe there is no detriment to the master plan and zoning ordinance. The project, if we look to the master plan, goals and objectives from December 2019, I believe it was, page 43 of the master plan reexamination, goal number one was to encourage appropriate land uses that promote the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality. And objective 1.02 within that first goal was to promote the appropriate mix of development in downtown and other commercial areas, and we believe that's certainly what we're doing. Goal number four was to maintain and enhance the economic vitality of the downtown and other business districts. Objective 4.01 was to promote opportunities for high-quality retail and commercial activity in all business districts, which we believe this project does. Maintain, objective 4.02 is to maintain a pedestrian scale in all appropriate business districts, and I think the architect has done a wonderful job in creating a pedestrian-scale building, it's certainly, what's most important in creating pedestrian scale is how you develop the fenestration on the first floor. But I think also in this case, the architect by creating the two-story mass that harkens back to the old permitted height of two stories that sits six feet forward of the taller mass, which reflects current zoning at three stories, I think there's certainly, I think it certainly maintains a pedestrian scale in that instance. Objective 4.03 is to leverage opportunities for new commercial development or redevelopment of existing properties where appropriate, this is certainly exactly what we're doing. It's a redevelopment of an infill property, and we think it's an appropriate location. Objective 4.04 is to strengthen existing business centers, including the downtown core. And when I get to the vision plan, I think they clearly define what's the center and what kind of development would go on to reinforce the core, and this is exactly the kind of location where that should happen, to reinforce the downtown core. The master plan recommendations for the B4 zone on page 54 of the 2019 reexamination is to encourage residential development in the downtown to make it more vibrant by putting additional feet on the ground and to provide more housing choices, particularly for young people and seniors, which I believe is exactly what we're doing. We look to the 2021 Milburn Downtown Vision Plan under the first section on Current Reality and the Introduction. The goals for the plan on page 10, goal number four is to maintain and enhance economic vitality at the downtown and the business districts again. And in the existing context section, Part 2, Section E, relating to retail demand on page 18, the plan projects that unmet demand for high-quality retail spaces and neighborhood goods and services sector will continue to grow. So that notion that retail is dead while retail has changed, if we do it right, there will be continued demand for high-quality retail space in that sector. And under Section F of that same section, it talked about growing downtown retail opportunities, and it stated, "In the long term, the township should focus on encouraging the type of development that will increase the number of daytime workers and resident customers. This would include downtown housing and office infill development at or adjacent to the retail core. The township should also improve the downtown's public realm to be convenient, safe, and comfortable for these customers to fully leverage their retail spending, particularly for neighborhood goods and services." So we are providing exactly that, we're providing the permitted use of retail services on the first floor, and then we're providing spaces for daytime workers and resident customers right above that. Under the vision section, talking about the retail environment on page 28, the plan recommends that the two-shoulder areas be developed with a wider range of uses to bring more people to the downtown and strengthen the core. As indicated in my testimony last time, this is actually, this is across the street from one of the shoulder areas, and this part of the street is not really referenced, it's not the core, and it wasn't listed as a shoulder, but we certainly think it acts as a shoulder as being one of the properties that is to the west of the Dunkin' Donuts. Under the implementation section for parking on page 67, it talked about eliminate required off-street parking for non-residential uses and incorporate provisions for shared parking. While parking is important, there's a trade-off between requiring enough parking for business patrons and requiring too much parking, which can be a burden on incoming business that wants to locate down. This is particularly an issue at most, as most of the downtown is already developed, so there's limited opportunities to provide new off-street parking, but we did have an opportunity, but we couldn't let the parking overwhelm the use, so we were able to provide 10, which really provides all the needs for the upper floors and allows the first floor to rely on well-placed perimeter parking lots, as well as available street parking that Mr. Hamels' report demonstrates is readily available. Under the last section I'll reference, that was the Design Standards Section, Design Standards in Implementation Section on page 76, and it says, "While downtown features no dominant architectural style, one common denominator and most successful area, the downtown core, or that all buildings, regardless of style or scale, to the pedestrian, engage the side..." Engage the sidewalk with high quality storefronts, entrances and signage. Conversely, the less successful areas along Essex Street east of Maine, where the buildings are raised up on columns set back from the behind surface parking and lock a one a place where buildings face the street with large expanses and windowless walls creates an inhospitable environment for the pedestrian. So we think that we are this project, in addition to being three fully permitted uses. We think it certainly meets all of the criteria outlined in the both the vision plan and the master plan for the type of development we're seeking in the downtown. We think it meets the both positive and negative criteria as part of the variances. And we certainly hope you'll you'll consider approving the project.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Madam Chairwoman, I have no further questions of Mr. Keller.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just going to, before we launch in two questions, just for the benefit of both our board and any members who are listening possibly for the first time. Just so that you have expectations and they can be met. So we've just completed Mr. Keller's testimony. We're going to allow the board to ask questions of Mr. Keller from his testimony, both from the prior meeting, if there are any remaining or outstanding questions, as well as anything he testified to tonight. After the board has our opportunity to ask questions and discuss, we will then open to the public questions for Mr. Keller. So at that point, you can use the the raise hand function. We will call you in, ask you to state your name and address, and you can ask your questions of Mr. Keller. After all questions have been answered. We will then have a board discussion. If we need, if we feel that there are items that are still sort of outstanding that we would like to resolve. And then we will allow public comment. And at that point, if you don't have a question, but just want to share thoughts, comments, make a statement to our board, we will ask you to similarly use the raise hand function. We'll call you in, have you sworn in? And then you can provide your your testimony. And then we will have you rejoin as an attendee. So just want to make sure those who are joining us that may want to make a comment know when it's the right time. I will I will again announce it. But right now we're going to turn to our board members for questions that we have regarding Mr. Keller's comment. Thank you for bearing with me through that. Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm sorry, I had to take like a thirty second emergency call. So I might have missed something, but it was around when he was discussing naming the building. And I just had concerns it might have been addressed. And again, I apologize if it was. The height seemed to be, it it made me a little uncomfortable. So I my recommendation is, I I don't know if a standard U-Haul would fit underneath that. And I just don't know what the height is. Is it nine feet, nine and a half, ten feet, twelve feet? I'm not sure. I saw the scale of the vehicle, but you know where I'm talking when you go underneath that little underpass?
Yeah, I believe the previous testimony that is that it is twelve and a half feet. But we would put a sign on it, one of those signs that you see in the in the mall parking lots where there'll be recessed within there on a chain, just recessed underneath the the lip, there'll be a chain with a hanging sign that's indicates the height. And that'll drop another six inches. That'll be set at twelve feet. So anybody who pulls in who is twelve feet or larger before they hit that, they're announced what the height is. And then before they, as they start to move in, if they're if they're twelve foot two inches are going to hit that sign. So there will be adequate signage that will fit a standard U-Haul truck, which we discussed last time. It will allow for a refuse truck to pull in there. It will allow for any of the type of moving vans we anticipate to service the property would be able to fit in that space.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Keller on his testimony? Mr. Keller, I do have one question and just wanted to confirm. And really just to make sure I'm hearing you and capturing this correctly. I know it wasn't captured in our meeting notes, but it likely would be in the resolution just for the record. You are requesting two variances. You are no longer requesting the variant as noted in the the reports for that sign that would be posted, that would have been posted along with the side of the building. And I think you called it out just now. But so is your testimony that that sign is no longer or it's just being reduced in size to comply?
No, our testimony, both Nancy's, Doherty's testimony and mine was that that sign will be eliminated.
Okay, thank you for confirming. Okay. Guest done.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Last time there was, I think Martha had our township engineer had brought an issue about lighting underneath the canopy or the driveway. Was that ever resolved? Because for me, this is where the pedestrians are going to come in. So if they're coming back late at night, expecting them to be walking from the train station. That's where I feel like the average lighting and everything else should be perfect for them. Is there is there a way to fix that?
I I my recollection, we could we can ask Ms. Callahan to to join in was I think it may have been in the planner's comments, but the lighting is actually brightest underneath the canopy. And we did that on purpose because we want people to to see where they are in the canopy. And that and that drove up our average grade. So we needed a waiver, I'm sorry, that drove up our average foot candle rating because we're asking for a waiver, not a variance, but a waiver because we exceed the allowable one foot candle, I believe it is. Allowance. I'll double check what that number is. Hold on one second.
It's it's point five to one.
Yeah, it's between point five and one. I think our average goes up to to above, just above that. And it's driven by the fact that our brightest spot on the property is in the entrance way. So we've accounted for that. It's more than adequate. It's way above. It's not overly bright, but it's certainly above any kind of security standards that are offered by the IESS, the International Lighting Organization that sets standards. So and that's where we have, we might have even a little bit of spillover into the driveway next door. Although with the existing vegetation, probably not. So it is an area we've already addressed and it is the safest area on the site. We also indicated that in the evening, because the lights at the rear of the property, even though there are no real adjoining neighbors, we had a slim swim club that's right on the just about on the property line behind us. Got commercial parking lots and buildings to the side. But regardless, those lights would be dimmed in the evening and there would be set on motion sensor. So when activity is detected in the back such as a car moving in or people walking through, they would come up to a fifty percent level sustained activity would come up to full brightness. There would still be lighting over the doors as is required by code. So we think it's eminently a very safe project.
Okay, I I thought the issue though was that in some areas it's very bright and in others it's very dark. Making it sort of difficult for people to tell depth or if there's a problem with the surface.
No, I think my testimony last time was our uniformity rates are are well below the town standards and your town standard is one of the most stringent. And uniformity rates are what dictates that. Yeah, you don't want to have a very bright section coming into a dark section because your eyes can't adjust fast enough. So we're at, I believe. Let me, let me find my plan here.
The proposed average is three point two of yours. And the mint to max is six point four.
Yep. I can, I'll share my screen again more quickly.
Sure.
And this was our lighting plan, which was A seventeen last time. And we show that right under the under the center of the building, there's two point six and three point two, which then gets captured by landscaping. And maybe there's a little spillover, but then you come into point nine. We had the lowest point was point five at the back, which is still consistent with secure secure lighting levels according to IESS. But there is a gradual transition from the from the brightest section as it comes around the back of the building into the furthest section away. So when you come out of the car, you're at one point nine, two point seven. These are all relatively low levels. So it's not uncommon. Before we went to LED lighting, it wouldn't be uncommon to have six or eight lumens foot candles under under a light source. Here they're all relatively small. And as was indicated by by the chair, we do have our max to min is six point four to one. And our average to min, which is really the one we look at most is three point two to one. Where it's it's significantly under what the town allows. We used to see plans with uniformity levels of nineteen to one, twenty to one, that still met the minimum and the maximums. But this is a really well crafted lighting plan that is, I think, very safe. It will not be a problem of driving from something that's too bright and the same is too dark. These are relatively low levels.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next question. How often do you expect the loading zone to be used?
Well, not very often. Obviously, whenever there's a, we only have three residential apartments and we've got three office spaces. So we don't expect, we can't control when you get turnover. We don't expect a whole lot. Obviously, when they're leased up. They will, they'll move in. I would say if you look at the some of the apartment buildings in the downtown. I've never seen a full size moving van at many of the apartment complexes in the downtown. And those are units with twenty thirty, buildings with twenty thirty units. Clearly, there will be move in, but the size, based upon the size of the of the of the units, we expect that it'll be it'll be infrequent and they'll be fairly on the smaller side of of the options for moving vans. And that'll be able to accommodate it. I think we thought it was better to provide some loading rather than none, which a lot of the downtown area has. And we think it's perfectly scaled between the height and the size of the loading space is perfectly spelled scaled to the types of vehicles we expect for this property.
Okay, and for how often do you expect the businesses and things like that? And they you expect them to be parked out front, correct?
Yeah, we do. It's, I've said this in the past, it's almost, and I may have said it last hearing. It's almost impossible to to get UPS drivers or FedEx drivers to to corral them to a spot. They usually will park in one spot and make a few deliveries. So with regard to the retail spaces, it'll be no different than any of the other retail spaces in the downtown. With the exception of food uses, most of the retail uses in the downtown get their deliveries through either Amazon, FedEx or UPS. And we expect that, given the the available parking in this area, as was evidenced by the the traffic expert, the parking expert. They'll be able to park at one of the curbside spaces and do a couple of deliveries, whether it's to this or to to any other uses that are nearby. And we don't expect it to be any different than any of the user in the downtown.
Okay, and last question, could you? Yeah, could you explain again why you weren't able to do underground parking? To add a couple more spaces?
Again, underground parking. We did, we did underground parking next to the 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 post office, but we were aided in that space because the topography was such that it was much higher in the back and we were able to then carve down, we were the push the building up, although I would argue that building probably sits a little too high above the street. So if we were to try to get underground parking, my my lot is not deep enough. Well, first of all, I if you're talking about true underground parking, so that I've got retail on the first floor and I get a parking lot that's below that. The transition area to get down below that structure would require too much depth. I don't have enough depth on my property to make that maneuver. And the topography isn't helping. So on other properties where we've been able to do that, we've been aided by grade differentials. This is essentially a virtually flat property. I just couldn't get down below there. I also don't know what the water table is in that area. For instance, the Beehive property across the street, there you've got a ten foot grade differential from Milburn Avenue up to Essex Street. So we were able to to leverage that to our advantage in gaining access and in creating underground parking. This this property didn't offer that opportunity. It's really impossible.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say too that, you know, the building looks great. I was very pleased to see the columns underneath the driveway there. Creates a very open view for pedestrians coming. So I I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gus. Okay, other questions from members of the board? Graham, I see our board planner, you have a question or comment?
Yes, I do. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Keller, I am just, you know, it's been a little bit of time has passed since our last meeting on this application. I just wanted to refresh testimony if there was any discussion regarding the lift arms that we you know, at the entry point to the rear parking area. Did we discuss the operation of those? You know, are those going to be a key fob system for the parking folks? How will that function with deliveries or other? You know, trash vehicles moving through circulation ingress and egress to the site with those lift arms that are shown on the site plan?
Yeah, generally, we did indicate that those would be, the only the only indication we made last time about that is that they would be keyed so that an emergency they would automatically go up. They generally would be a key fob, but also have a code. So whether the the refuse pickup people would be able to either access the code or a key fob. And then for deliveries, we anticipate obviously, one of the tenants will have to be present at the move in anyway. So they would be able to lift that gate as required. So we're flexible on that. Based upon my client has another building on Essex. And even though it is well signed that it is for tenants only. They routinely find the public parking back there. So it was it was important for the the developer of this property to make sure they could have a a way of keeping out people. And that's why we really, we really arranged the parking so that there's no public parking in the back. No retail customers and even no salespeople who work in the shops are will use the back. It's just for the office and just for the residential users, which limits the amount of use. And so we're open to discussion on the nature of that, but based upon my client's existing experience with chasing restaurant parkers and shopping partners out of her space in Essex, which is much less well traveled than this. We felt it was important.
Hey, thank you.
Before we, before we continue, Eileen, if you could bring Diane, she had gotten popped off and she's just waiting to get back into panelist mode. Thank you. But hopefully Diane was able to hear that, the response to that question.
And then my next question is just kind of following up on Mr. Howlett's point regarding the you know, increased loading demand for food service uses, for example. So is it the applicant's intent that the first floor spaces will be for retail use exclusively? And would there be a condition, would you be open to a condition of fixing that as a stipulated use of the first floor space? Now, obviously, the the zone here permits other uses within the first floor area, including, you know, food establishments. You know, but given the increased demand for loading of those types of uses, would you consent to a condition for retail use only on the first floor?
I think that what we would, we would certainly indicate that there would be no no restaurants with regard to whether a shop offers some food as as part of their business, it's intended to be conforming, conforming applications, obviously. Retail food and restaurants are permitted conditional uses. And under municipal land use law, if the applicant sought to move one of those tenants into those bases, they would have to come back to the board for confirmation that they meet the conditions of the conditional use. And then they could address the issue of that the parking was based upon retail retail service and not necessarily food food groups. We find that a lot of the places, the smaller places that offer some food generally tend to also get deliveries with smaller UPS FedEx type vehicles. Restaurants clearly get and can get the much larger uses. So I think we would agree that no restaurants, no cafes, no fast food restaurants. But we'd like to at least reserve the use for any of the other permitted uses that within the zone with the recognition that any conditional use, we'd have to come back to for to the board anyways.
Thank you. And then also regarding the rear parking area, you know, we we have the provision for a couple of electric vehicle charging stations. You know, the parking is exclusively for tenants of the building, you know, residents and office tenants, as you've indicated previously. Will the electric charging stations be divided between those uses equally? Or will they are these open access spaces? Just if you could discuss that.
They're open access for the for the tenants of the building for the second and third floor. They're not available for the general public. Obviously, there's a state mandate that we provide charging stations on all site plans going forward and it's and we're providing the maximum amount required to be right out of the out of the blocks. So I think that clearly with all of the mandates and all of the the announcements of the major car companies plan to be all electric within the next five to ten years. I think that these will adequately supply the the needs of the second and third floor tenants. It's not anticipated that, you know, somebody coming down to pick up something in a Um, it's not anticipated that, um, you know, somebody coming down to pick up something in a shop is going to get a quick, quick fifteen, uh, fifteen-minute charge. Uh, at some point, the town is going to probably add, uh, some form of charging stations into the public lots. But, uh, that's not the purpose for these here. We do want to keep it bifurcated. Um, it is a fully conforming parking lot in terms of the backup areas and the size and spaces. But we do want to keep it, uh, away from the general public who aren't familiar with the area.
Okay, um, and just following up, I believe that, you know, you provided testimony on this, uh, last time, but just regarding the charging stations, uh, I believe that we had discussed providing wheel stops, uh, at the, uh, charging facilities, uh, to protect them from any vehicular damage. Is that correct?
We indicated that we would prefer not to, uh, have a stipulation of, of providing, uh, wheel stops across all parking areas. Um, the charging stations come in different varieties. Many of them sit on top of concrete bollards that are already, uh, um, vehicle resistant. So, um, we'd like to leave it up to the owner. Obviously, the owner doesn't want to put in an expensive charging station that isn't protected. So for those areas, um, where the charging stations are, we would either add a bollard or, uh, a wheel stop to protect them. But it does become a maintenance issue with plowing, uh, and maintenance of the parking lot. Um, if they're not kept after they get moved, we're not a big fan of wheel stops or at times when they're great. But I think, um, in this parking lot, we'd like to leave that, uh, to the discretion of the owner.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Graham. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Keller?
Can I ask a question real quick? Just regarding the uses, uh, like Graham just said, um, and Mr. Keller, you said you, you would reach no restaurant uses, but that you would like to keep open the option of allowing the other permitted uses in the event that the first floor retail. And I guess my concern, I don't know, because we have the waiver of the B four parking. So if this gets approved with retail on the first floor and then at some point, uh, they decide to put in an instructional school and studio or something else that's permitted that has a greater parking demand, we have the waiver of the B four, which then doesn't require a site plan approval because they're not expanding the building. So I just don't know how that would. I want to get some clarity on that before.
Sure, I can, I can have, um, Mr. S- Solo double-check with our client, but I believe that, um, the idea was that we would, uh, we would like to reserve the opportunity to go with any permitted use, um, that does not require more parking than the one per, uh, two hundred square feet, uh, on the, on the first floor. So if, if it was a, uh, an instructional studio that is, I believe, what, one for one fifty, I think it is, or something like that, we recognize that that would have to come back to the board for an expansion of the variance relief that was requested.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, counsel. Go ahead, Ed.
Uh, just a couple of things. Is, is there any intention to put the, the street number or that building number on the building? You said the building is going to, going to have a name and that's fine. But I've noticed when I drive in places where I am unfamiliar, I'm given an address typically, you know, a number. And I'm driving down the street looking for numbers, which are not always, uh, visible or quickly visible. Uh, so, uh, do you intend to not have any number on the building and just have a name?
Uh, the, the two retail's, uh, locations would have the street numbers on the, on the doors on the front. So that would be handled in that matter. I'd have to defer to, to either, um, the architect on how to handle that. Certainly, um, within that same square footage, we could put the street address. If there was a different street address for the above units could be on there. Uh, generally, it's going to be something, you know, uh, there, it's up to the post office and the tax assessor as, as to how they're assessed. But I think that certainly the two retail spaces will have addresses. I don't know that there's been a decision on how, uh, the upper floors would be differentiated, uh, until we get information back from the tax office.
Uh, will that impact the signs, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm getting to?
No, I think that certainly we've committed that, uh, we took the sign off the east-facing facade because it wasn't compliant. Um, if there was any other signage, uh, address signage that went on the building would be on the face of the building. It would just be the address, um, and it may be on that section that's set back six feet. But it would be fully in conformance with the zoning ordinance. Our, our signage that faces the street is so far under the square footage, we could easily add, um, a sign, uh, on the recess facade, um, that indicated what the street address, if there was a different street address for the offices and apartments, and we would not need to come back for, to this board.
If I understood your testimony correctly, the parking spaces that are being provided will be only for the building occupancy, the retail building occupant, uh, the office building occupant or the residential building occupant. Uh, will there be some kind of sign as someone comes and sees the driveway there to say effectively, parking for tenants only or some, some sign? If so, where will that be?
All right, well, first of all, um, the testimony is that, uh, as part of the leases, there will be no assigned parking to the first floor retail, um, tenants, either for patrons or for employees. The parking, uh, is reserved for the office use and the residential uses. Uh, again, uh, one space will be in the lease for each of the three apartments and two spaces in the lease for each of the three, uh, office, uh, tenant spaces. With regard to the, uh, it was anticipated that, um, probably on that sign that gives you the height would be something that said, you know, um, parking for, um, employees only or parking for, uh, for building tenants only, something to that effect. Um, we want it visible but discreet. We don't want to take away from the architecture. We don't want to put big signs in the building. So whether, uh, we've got some area right inside, um, on the, on the easterly curve, we could put a sign attached to one of the columns that, uh, uh, that indicated, but there would be some form of indication that it is not, uh, not public parking in the back.
Uh, and it, did I understand your testimony that access, uh, for the gates will be through a fob system?
A, a, a fob system, um, and/or keypad.
Okay, thank you.
So obviously, fob would be most users, but there would be a keypad so that if someone didn't have their fob and they wanted to let, um, uh, a, a van in or the, um, if the refuse company didn't have a key fob, they could punch the code in and open that gate.
Will there be one gate or two gates?
I don't know. I'd have to defer to the architect on that. I think probably two, given the height of the building. But I, I'm not, I'm not positive.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the board?
Uh, not a question, just a clarification to note that, uh, section fifteen dash five dot two requires numbering of all buildings within the township. So, uh, the building will have to show a number for display and that's for emergency services typically.
There's also the fire marshals report.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
It definitely will be. I just don't know whether there'll be three or two, and I don't know where that, I know there'll be two. I just don't know where the third one will be located. But obviously, we do recognize we have to sign that.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, I think we are ready to open up for questions from members of the public. So this is if any members of the public have questions for Mr. Keller, um, based on his testimony, both last meeting and this meeting. And I think we're starting to get some hands raised. So Eileen will wait for you to bring in members of the public. Okay, Jean Pastorak, you should be here. If you could just state your name for the record and your address, and then you can go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you. Jean Pastorak, three, four, two Hobart Avenue. I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure, um, I hope they're all, um, okay to ask of the, of, um, the planner. Um, the, um, the, the, there was, I was, I was in attendance at the township committee meeting last night and there happened to be a presentation made by a developer, RPM. One of the comments that they made was, uh, they took care to use red brick so that the, um, the development that they were focused on, which is, um, a proposed, uh, building on Main Street, uh, at the current location of the town, uh, the DPW site. So they, they mentioned that they were going to use the red brick to blend in better with and complement the neighborhood. So I just wondered, was that considered, is, what were the considerations in terms of, um, blending in with the neighborhood? Um, and, and the materials that gray, the, I, I don't know what you call that stucco-looking, uh, material. Is that, is that what you would consider uh, adequate for trying to blend in or be part of, 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 of a streetscape? Or what? I don't know what the right terminology is, but could you comment on that?
Uh, first of all, I did hear the comment last night by RPM, um, that's a different project. Um, I think that this is a question that is more appropriate to the architect. However, I did point out in, in our vision plan, um, the design standards implementation section on page seventy-six, specifically states while no downtown features are, uh, while downtown features no dominant architectural style, um, the dominating, uh, factor needs to be, they need to be scaled pedestrian activity. So, um, A, that's a, another neighborhood, um, and I don't, I haven't analyzed that neighborhood. I know it well, but I haven't analyzed it. And I didn't see all of the presentation last night. But I don't know that we don't have any design standards within the community. I think it's, uh, they presented testimony that they were doing brick to blend in with other buildings, but we do have other materials in the downtown. And so I, well, I think it's an architectural question. Um, I don't think it's, uh, I don't think that this building is either required statutorily, um, or otherwise to be of a brick character. I think that the architect worked hard with the owner to develop, uh, something that they feel is, is attractive and will blend in. Certainly the massing, as I said, the most important thing to me, as well as, um, our vision plan is that the scale of the building, the massing of the building and the way it treats the pedestrian, um, uh, friendly sidewalk is what's most important.
I guess my question though was, um, I, I, a comment that I, actually, there are two, I, from your, um, the pre- presented, uh, drawings that you showed, there are two red brick buildings on either side, I think, right? Is that what I saw? So actually, that, right immediately next to the, the, uh, project or, or both red brick buildings. But I, I guess, I just asked, was it considered? I, I, maybe you don't know the answer to that.
Actually, the building to the west of us, I do not believe is a brick building. Obviously, Schoolhouse Plaza is. Yeah, it's further back from the street, but I do not believe that the, uh, what was, uh, Clemenza's, um, I do not believe that is, uh, brick. I could bring up the image again if you'd like, but that is not a brick building.
That's okay, that's fine. Um, the other thing I wondered about is the, um, you know, the raised, uh, whatever those are called. I don't know what you call them. They look like stilts or, I'm not sure what you would call it, but to raise the building, um, I'm sorry to laugh for the, the cars to go through the parking area. Um, I don't, I don't recall seeing a feature like that on a building in Melbourne. Is that something that exists elsewhere in, in the township that you're aware of? And, uh, would you say that that does seem in place in that location in Melbourne?
I think that it, uh, it allows for us to, um, provide an access to the back parking lot and not create a gap, um, a necessary gap in the street wall. So it manages to blend that opportunity. I think, um, while I can't think of any other, we have the building, uh, next to the post office that there's a, a depressed garage. Um, there are some buildings that have done it less attractively, such as the one on the corner of Essex and Lackawanna, where most of the park is in the building. I think this is a far more elegant solution, um, uh, and, and doesn't create a gap. Um, you know, the, the, the missing tooth in the, in the Mona Lisa smile. Um, you've got a rhythm of buildings that's created in the downtown. I think it's continued on that second floor. I think we provided for an adequate entrance and I don't think it's uncommon. Um, and I don't think it's out of place in the downtown and nor is it restricted under our ordinance.
Uh, you, how do you anticipate emergency vehicles, um, accessing people who are, need their services that are whatever, whichever level they're on? How would they, how would an ambulance get in and out and how would that patient be transported?
An ambulance can certainly fit under the building at the height it's proposed. Um, and, uh, emergency vehicles such as fire, um, would not access the back. There's a, there's a fire hook up in the front of the building proposed. And, uh, they would never risk, um, uh, bringing a piece of apparatus behind a building anywhere in the downtown. They would fight it from the street. Um, so, uh, emergency vehicles such as, uh, uh, an ambulance can access. However, we don't expect, uh, fire trucks would, would, uh, ever go back there. And I believe the fire department had no comment on the application.
So an ambulance would then through in that entrance way and just sort of stay there. They would block the parking. Could, would they block the pedestrian sidewalk there to be able to get the patient in and out or how, how? I just don't understand the scale exactly how that would work.
They're either going to park in the street and, and go up the entrance driveway, or they're going to park in the driveway where they can get fully off the street, not blocking the sidewalk. But again, we're talking about an emergency situation. We're not talking about something that happens every day. Um, I can't remember, other than a few major accidents, I can't remember having seen, and, and I think, uh, Ms. Egglow would probably know the frequency of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, the need for access. But I, I certainly think it's an isolated incident. They have red flashing lights. Um, they can certainly safely, safely navigate. Um, I would actually posit that, and I think, um, I think certainly for a, for a vehicle, a vehicle could pull down our driveway and turn around and come back out, uh, forward. I'm not sure if the, if an emergency vehicle do that, they might have to back up, but it wouldn't be uncommon to have, uh, one person, uh, make sure that there's no one crossing while the emergency vehicle, vehicle backs up. But again, we're talking about a, a relatively isolated incident, uh, infrequent, uh, activity, but we can accommodate in terms of height.
Okay, um, and speaking of the, the, just the pedestrians coming back and forth, I, I just remember a long conversation going on about the eighty-five project about, you know, children walking back and forth over the driveway entrances. Do you, do you anticipate there being any warnings, you know, when cars are coming in and out to the pedestrians that might be coming back and forth? Because, you know, there actually are quite a few students and younger people that go downtown after school, et cetera. So how, how is that going to work?
Uh, as we indicated last time in my testimony, um, there's, there is not expect, this parking lot is not expected to be in high demand. Uh, there'll be people coming in, uh, for the offices, we expect in the morning and leaving in the evening. And then the residents, um, it's anticipated, even though they'll have one car, maybe one person drives out in the morning, comes back at the end of work or, um, most likely will walk up and take the train. So the frequency of the use is, is rather limited. And certainly, we don't expect much use during the, uh, possibly during the morning, but certainly, uh, not much would occur in the afternoon, school let-out time. But what's, what's unique about this property is the way we've set back that second mass, uh, and the egress aisle is on the far side of, uh, away from that. So, um, as was, uh, uh, noted by, I think, uh, Mr. Hopeart, um, we actually have good visibility and it was actually testified by our traffic, uh, and parking expert, uh, that there's a good adequate, not just adequate, there's safe visibility. We meet all of the, um, the site triangle requirements of the ordinance. Um, so there should be good visibility. There's, there's much better visibility. I don't remember the specifics of, um, the Chapman-Woodland Road, uh, discussion. I was, I did not present that. But I think that this is a, uh, this is an area where though that had, uh, essentially parking for sixty-three or sixty-five units, as well as ten thousand square feet of medical space for some of medical group that had to use those driveways. This is not that scale. We have, we have single direct, uh, we have single width, two-way drive aisles throughout the downtown. Um, and they function safely. And certainly, this is better than, I think, almost every other one of them in terms of visibility.
And now I understand your argument that it's not as big, but I don't know if you've ever just, you know, been downtown when all the kids are coming from either the high school or middle school, but they tend to be, you know, not exactly paying attention to their surroundings and also just goofing around together and not really looking at what's in front or behind them. So I just
I've witnessed it. I've witnessed the kids, you know, almost getting into the traffic near, in front of Starbucks, kidding around. I go, I go up into town every single day and I park and I, and I buy lunch. Um, and sometimes it's when school's out, sometimes it's in the mornings. But, um, I'm very familiar with the way it works in the downtown and, and the recklessness of youth. I, I had one of those who's about twenty-four, but he's still a little reckless at times. So I, I'm certainly familiar with it and I feel very safe about this parking lot. And again, I think it's safe on its own, as was, as was testified by our traffic expert. But also I think it's, um, I think it's certainly safer than almost every other driveway in the downtown.
Okay, um, so I, I guess there's no, no other considerations. It's just going to work as it is with the lighting it is. And, you know, kids will just have to be mindful and pedestrians and cars coming in and out, right? That's, okay.
I think there's, again, there's adequate visibility for the kids to see a car and there's adequate visibility for the cars to see the kids, both directions.
Okay, um, as far as the, the Okay. Um, as far as the, the, um, parking, I know your testimony that you felt that the public parking will be adequate. Um, is, could you, I mean, on what basis, again, did you determine that? Just based on the number of employees, the residents and the, um, visitors coming back and forth to the retail establishments? You feel that the adjacent parking, the adjacent public parking on the street or in the lots is going to be adequate? Cause I, from my experience, um, it's almost doesn't matter what time of day it is, that especially the lots that are right by the Dunkin' Donuts and so forth, that they seem to be pretty jammed now. I, I, I mean, I've noticed since COVID's receded that they, it's especially difficult to find parking during the day. And even in the evening at the dinner, you know, if you're going to town for dinner. So I just wondered, when was that, you know, when did you study that or when did you establish that? Was it pre-COVID, during COVID, after COVID, uh, that the parking would be adequate?
I think that was, that, uh, there was exhaustive testimony by our traffic expert on, on the nature of the study. Um, the layers of, uh, conservatism that were taken and looking at, uh, both a, uh, a, a local, a, a hyper-localized area and then a slightly larger area. Um, that traffic, um, that, that parking expert, uh, did the traffic studies for the aquatic center on Taylor Street. Uh, we got variants for that. They did the, the study for, uh, flywheel when they moved in. And those studies, uh, proved to be ultimately correct in, in assessing available parking. Um, they were obviously, they, these studies were not done, um, uh, pre-pandemic, but they weren't done at the height of the pandemic either. They were done late last year on a, on a, on a sunny Saturday and a sunny Thursday. So we had a midweek date and a Saturday date. Um, and I think the, uh, the traffic expert indicated he walked something like six miles, um, between, uh, on his rounds over the time. And that's all, um, that's all reported in the traffic study, which was entered as, as, uh, as an exhibit. And, uh, and exhaustive testimony was provided. So it's not my statement, but, um, I, I've often said in this town, we have a perceived parking problem. That's really a parking proximity problem, um, and not necessarily a, a problem on available parking. We can't always park within thirty feet of the Dunkin' Donuts if that's where we want to go, but that's not the goal of parking in the downtown. The same way on the second floor of a mall, um, you always have to walk at some angle. You see a store across the way, but you can't get to it because you have to walk by six other stores to get to it. And it's the same rationale in downtown parking. We want the people coming to, to the, to the, uh, first floor retail spaces to park someplace and pass by, um, the juice shop or pass by one of the gift shops so that they'll combine their trips and shop in both places. And that's why, um, you know, we, we don't want to see, um, on-street parking for rest, for retail, because retail then can't, they can't appropriately go to, if, if the retail customers use our back parking lot, they would jam it up if they went somewhere else. So really it achieves
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna remind us to just answer. I appreciate the, uh, the plug for downtown Melbourne business, but I just want to make sure, um, uh, Ms. Pastor Nak can ask all her questions and we can get to all questions tonight, but I'm sorry to cut you off, but thank you.
Going to, uh, move on to another question, which is, um, you've mentioned, you've used the phrase live work arrangements between the second and third floor. Um, was there any discussion, uh, or envisioning of converting, um, the second floor office space ever to residential?
That's not the application that's before you, and I don't know what the discussion was with the architect and, um, owner.
Okay. Um, I guess then that leads to another question, um, related to affordable housing, which was on the agenda last, at last night's TC meeting. So it's fresh in my mind. Uh, would this property, um, be subject to, um, an inclusionary housing surcharge? Cause there aren't, um, any affordable units and therefore, you know, is that connected in any way with maybe the future potential for something like that happening? Do you have any thoughts on that or?
I don't have any thoughts on that. There's, there are no, um, affordable units proposed, nor are they required and they're our current ordinance. Uh, again, we only have three apartments here.
Um, and did you just confirm again, you said that the, the prior, um, buildings were demolished in September of twenty twenty-one? Is that what you said?
I believe it was September twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-one, but I could defer to our attorney who would know the exact date.
Okay. So that was both that were demolished at the same time?
I believe so.
Yeah.
But then relative, you know, within the same, uh, up to demolition operation. I don't know which building came down first or whether one stayed up for long and the other, but during the same week, I think they both came down.
Um, okay. Well, th- this getting back to the previous question, the answer that you gave, is there any way to, um, I, I mean, maybe this is more to our own, um, our own planner or uh, attorney, but is there any way to kind of ensure that that second floor remains office space and not becomes residential? I mean, is, if, if that's what this, 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 um, proposal is for this development, why not say that that's what it is and not have to?
Why would you, I'm not sure why you're asked, why you're asserting that that's the goal here, because it's not the goal. We've created office space on the second floor. There's no plan to convert that to residential. Um, certainly that I know of, unless you know something I don't know, but my client has always asserted they want to have three uses. Retail first floor, office second floor and apartments on the third floor. Obviously, um, if, i- if you were to convert the second floor to reti- to office, I'm sorry, to apartments, um, I'm not sure if site plan would be required, but certainly the parking, uh, demand would be, parking demand would go down. But, um, that's not the plan. And obviously if, if at some point in the future, cause I don't know what's going to happen in ten, twenty, thirty years, uh, there's a move to change that, they'll follow all required municipal, um, uh, requirements to do so.
Well, I just want to reiterate, it was the words you used, live work arrangements that spurred the question in my mind. So.
Well, work on the second floor, live on the third floor.
I'm just responding to the words that you use. So, um, I also, um, I guess this is my last, um, question. It was, um, you talked about, uh, high quality retail, um, and the retail space demand. Can you be a little bit more specific? Like what do you mean by high quality? What does that mean? What, what, what are you envisioning there? I know you talked a little bit about no restaurants, no food per se, but what kind of, um, retail did you hold in mind?
I wasn't referring to the quality of the vendor. I was talking about the quality of the space being, uh, pedestrian friendly, a lot of glass, appropriate ceiling heights for, um, for a, um, a proper retail experience, which was all testified by the architect as, as part of their goals, not the, not the actual ten.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Um, if any other members of, uh, the public have questions for Mr. Keller, um, that haven't yet been answered now is the opportunity to use the, the raise hand function if you have any questions. Okay. I think I see another one. Great. And I believe, uh, you're labeled as Igor V. If you would be able to turn your camera and your, your volume on.
Just a question to, uh, Mr. Keller. Who was the architect on this, um, application? I particularly liked the design. I live in town at one eighty Myrtle Avenue. I think it's a thoughtful, very elegant design, very consistent with, um, you know, what a community that is doing some, some, um, innovative work is, is looking to build. Can you just share the name so that I can keep it for my records in case I, um, need a high-quality architect, please?
Yes, um, uh, Nancy Doherty from Studio twelve hundred, uh, presented at the last hearing on behalf of this, uh, application. They're a, a local architect here in town. Um, and, uh, they've done a number of other buildings, some brick, um, in the, in the downtown.
I will also add, um, if you would like their, the materials, the beating materials are made public on our website. So if you went to the Melbourne Planning Board, you could just Google that and it will come up. Um, and you can click on it and it has, um, they have their signature, which includes their contact information if you want that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay. Um, unless any additional questions have come up by members of the planning board, I think we can move to public comment session. Unless anybody wanted to raise, uh, go ahead, guest on, go ahead.
Sorry, one more came up just with the loading zone again. Um, i- is the loading zone designated in any way? Are there going to be markings on it?
Yeah, um, there'll be some markings on it, but it'll, it'll be somewhat discreet. Obviously it's, we're quite honest. We're taking up one lane of a two, of a two-way driveway during that period. It would be the egress section, but there's enough move, there's enough room for a vehicle to back in there. And so someone coming out can come completely around it, get back into the egress lane before they, uh, come up to the sidewalks. There's no, uh, there's no difficulty, but there would be some signage under there. Um, obviously there'd be probably some, some striping indicating fires on no parking. And there would be probably a, uh, right up against the building. And then there would probably be, um, some de- designation through painted, uh, painting on the, the driveway indicating it's a loading area.
Okay, that sounds good. I guess, yeah, my, my intention with that would be more so to encourage any of the deliveries to be able to use that as well. So not just to say, hey, we're going to park on the street, because we always do it, but we did provide a spot for you. We'd like you to do that to improve the situation. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, Ms. Nevis.
Um, I'm not sure if Mr. Keller can answer this question, but I, I didn't see in the, um, January meeting, a measurement of the balconies on the fr- front facade of the building, how high those balconies come up if someone were to stand on the balcony, where they would come up on, on a person. So I, I didn't get a sense of that. I don't know if you can answer that. I was just curious.
Is the question like whether they're to, to code or just, you're just curious out of just
how, 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 what the measurement is on the balconies?
I have to defer to the architect for that. But the only, the only balconies are actually on the third floor. So there's no building above them. And they would obviously, the height of the railings, the railings for the one, uh, most easterly balcony, uh, apartment would be, um, there's railings and there's no building above it. And then for the balconies that are over the retail space, those are not visible because they're, they're blocked by a, um, a screen wall. So, but there's no, there's no building above them. So there's no, there's nothing you would hit your head on, et cetera. But I have to defer to, if you need an exact dimension, we'd have to bring the architect back.
I think I was just wondering whether if people put things out on the balcony, whether it would be visible from the street or whether the rail goes up high enough that that would be covered.
Uh, certainly the westerly two units, uh, anything on the balconies would be, uh, screened from the, from the, the parapet wall there, uh, as it's designed, the balcony on the easternmost, um, is, is railing. Um, and obviously if there's a chair or something that's put out there, um, it would, it could be seen from the street.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So I think we're going to be ready for the public, uh, comment, uh, component. I see also we have, uh, nearly forty attendees, um, participating tonight. So we welcome any and all, um, members of the public who would like to comment. Um, but given there are nearly forty of you, and if we want to give everybody a chance, um, we ask if you, as you speak, if you can kind of keep your comments to about two or three minutes, um, just so that we can make sure we can get through all who want to give any comment. If, if that is the case, as a reminder, if anybody has joined since the beginning, uh, if you use the raise hand function, which you can start doing now, what we'll do is call you in one at a time. We'll have you sworn in and you can then, you know, take a couple of minutes to share any testimony. You'll just make your statement and then we will, uh, thank you and have you rejoin as an attendee mode. So, um, go ahead and start using the raise hand function. We can begin to call in our, uh, commentary. Uh, Katie, definitely. Sorry if I'm pronouncing that correctly. If you could unmute and turn your camera on so we can see you.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Um, hi, my name is Katie DeSoe.
Wait, 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 hold on a second. You need to be sworn in. Just raise your right hand. Just raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, unbothered truth?
I do.
Your name, spell your name and address for the record.
My name is Katie DeSoe, K A D I E, last name is D E S O E. I live at nine Edwards Place in Short Hills. And, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of Nadej Nickel and her proposed development. Um, I was actually in front of a similar committee three or four years ago, when Nadej was first proposing the idea of the book house. And at that point I was honestly just speaking as a friend in support of her opening a store in town and, um, you know, didn't really understand why it was something even up for debate. But I think in those, you know, the subsequent years, I've really developed a much better understanding and appreciation of her vision, having experienced it. You know, Nadej didn't simply want to open a bookstore. I mean, sure, she sells books. I was there yesterday. But her store has become more of a meeting place within our community. You know, people come to participate in book clubs. They come to have a coffee and chat with friends. They come to view the gallery of local artists in the basement. They come to meet with local offer, authors who self-publish their own works. I mean, my own family came to the store, um, right before the holidays to take pictures with Santa and then we had lunch downtown. Nadej is a person who's really committed to our community and supports all of the PTOs and never turns down an offer for a potential partnership. Um, in, in town. And I think that, you know, through all that she's shown a real dedication and commitment to our community that, that, um, you know, few really have, you know, I think especially during COVID, when so many businesses were hit, she was not only, you know, trying to drum up her own business, but she was sounding the, um, you know, using her platform to promote other businesses and try to act in concert with them and helping drive, um, folks to patronize folks in our own town. And, you know, just as I was excited for the book house, I'm excited to see what her new venture brings and how it will enhance the community, just as the book house has. So I, uh, would heartily encourage your approval and appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Okay. We will bring in our next testimonial. Okay. Alex Saltzman, welcome.
Unmute yourself.
You're muted and we'll, we'll have you sworn in. Go ahead.
Never heard of that before. Please, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, unbothered truth?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, spell your name, please.
Alex Zal- Zaltzman, Z A L T S M A N, twenty-eight Marion Avenue, Short Hills.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Saltzman. Go ahead.
All right. I want to say two things real quick. One is that Nadej opened a bookstore, probably not the kind of business anyone would think whatever, open like from scratch. She opened it, uh, to, to really for our community to have a place, we buy books, but only, uh, to the, what, uh, Katie said, um, to create a, a community and I really respect that. And, and I think it's been a, a, and took a part of our community too. As a business, as a business owner and an entrepreneur, fellow business owner and entrepreneur, I own businesses at downtown as well. Um, I'm getting a little tired of looking at these old buildings that need to be torn down and replaced with something that is a little bit more modern. Um, and, you know, get it, get it downtown just more vibrant. Um, I was on the, on, on, uh, on the visiting committee a couple of years ago. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm very passionate about this. So we have to like, you know, I'm sure the planning board is going to think through all the planning board issues. You know, I might, I might hear a comment about the technical aspects of it. I'm talking about the aesthetics of it and the need for our town to start modernizing and start living in the twentieth century. So that's all I gotta say.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Okay. Looks like next we're bringing in somebody named Michelle. That's all I see. So you could unmute yourself and turn your camera on. You can, we can have you sworn in.
Okay. Hi.
Please raise your right hand. You swore from testimony about to give to you the truth, whole truth, unbothered truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address for the record, spell your name.
Michelle Reddick, R E T I K, address one fifty Forest Drive in Short Hills.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, thank you so much for the opportunity to join you tonight. Um, I just wanted to say I've been watching this. I am definitely a friend of Nadej. I met her through her book house. Um, and so certainly there is that aspect of me being interested in this project. But, uh, before I knew Nadej, I was a business owner in town. And I'm really coming tonight as a former business owner and as somebody who's lived here for, um, gosh, almost twenty-three years now. now. I think maybe as a business owner, I am always looking at things through that lens. And I look at some of the towns around us that seem to be thriving. I do remember, just as a quick point of reference, when they were building the new apartments and retail in Maplewood, there was a little bit of discomfort and outrage because they felt that it would crowd the downtown area. But actually, it had really brought a lot of energy. There's a restaurant and apartments, and it's a beautiful building, and it's always lit up nicely. So at night, when you're walking around, and I look at Summit and some of the new businesses that they have there and some of the renovations, and I just want to say that I really love Melbourne, Short Hills, and I would really love to see our downtown thrive and be full of life and energy and activity like our surrounding neighborhood towns are. And so when I see a project like this, whether it's Nadeja or anybody else, I do think that it's really important, maybe even vital for our downtown. We do need to innovate, renovate, improve, and attract new businesses, bring in customers and people from other towns with things that we can offer that they might not find in some of the neighboring towns. And I'm really hopeful that that's part of what this will do. And I think that it's just, in general, I'm not criticizing what was there previously in terms of the building itself or the businesses. I'm just saying that I think this is a very positive improvement to the downtown area. And on a more personal note, I would like to say that as a business owner previously and somebody who lives in town, I really do like having business owners, property owners, and people who are residents of Melbourne, Short Hills, who are also business owners. And not only is Nadeja a business owner, but she works in her business. And I personally just enjoy seeing her or other people in town like her who are buying the businesses who live here, trying to improve the town that we live in, as opposed to just outside builders or realtors who come in and buy up buildings and just want to rent them out just for the profit. I feel like she has the very best interest in mind, and I really support everything about this project.
Thank you so much for the comment. Thank you. Okay, next. Ms. Pasternak, welcome back.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Jean Pasternak, J-E-A-N-P-A-S-T-E-R-N-A-K, 342 Hobart Avenue, Short Hills. I just want to comment that I think I'm in agreement with the previous commentators, that it's really great to have new businesses, new developments, and new energy coming into the town. But I also feel very strongly that we shouldn't forget our history, that we do have a very beautiful town, that was described earlier in terms of what the master plan says. And I think that we should not lose sight of the people who came before us to create this beauty. Mr. Hardshorn, amongst others, who just provided us with an absolutely stunning town. And I think that we shouldn't just forget about how it looks, the buildings that have come before, the historic nature of this town, how it fits into the region, the area. I do really take exception to the comment that was made by the last expert, the planner, about how, you know, it's such an improvement over the previous buildings. That's in the eye of the beholder. Many people actually loved those buildings and how they looked and the history that they evoked when a member or resident or, you know, a member of the public was passing by. So I just hope.
She seems to have frozen on my screen.
It's necessary, but it's also important that we keep our history in mind. And I'd also like to say that I do feel that it stands out in that location to the eye. I think that what the planners, I'm sorry, the developers, RHN, or whatever they were called last evening at the township committee regarding their comments using the red brick to try and fit in, doesn't mean it has to be exactly the same, but it does seem to make sense to me that you try and blend a little bit more in with your surrounding to keep some of that history and some of the feel and the streetscape and the landscape and the whatever, preserve some of what makes our town unique. It is unique. And I don't think we need to feel that we have to emulate Summit or any other town. I mean, we are what we are. And it's quite beautiful, and it was well thought through by many people before us. The other one other comment I'd like to make is, there is, you know, just some recent history of other developments, like the Upton, it's much larger, obviously. But I recall people saying there'd be 13 schoolchildren. That was last September, when the building wasn't even full. It turned out that there were 70-plus students that had to, you know, come into our school system. So I think it's important that we not just say that this is meant for young singles or couples and, you know, or empty nesters. I mean, clearly, there can be families that come in with children. And so it's good to know that our planning board thinks about that, is, you know, asking in return for that cost to the town and our residents, that we get something, you know, in recognition of the increased cost to our schools of having more students. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Our next commenter, Hannah, if you could turn your camera on and unmute.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please, spelling your name.
Sure, it's Hannah Ashton, A-S-H-T-O-N, 18 Colonial Way, Short Hills.
Great. And can I ask, do you just speak up a little bit? Somehow, you're a little bit soft on my volume. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I'm just saying that I'm in support of this proposal. I've known Nadeja now for almost nine years and have been so impressed with what Nadeja has done for the book house. And I can't even imagine the town without it now. It's become such a part of our community and have been to so many wonderful events there. It's a lovely place to take my children. And I think, given, you know, what a great job Nadeja has done with the book house, I'm excited to see what else she can do for our town. So I'd just like to say that I'm really in support of it.
Wonderful, thank you.
Oh, and I also think the design is beautiful of that building.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. Okay, we're joined by Joanna Parker-Lenz. You can go ahead and unmute and turn your camera on.
Hi there. Joining you from Mexico.
Hold on a second. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address, spelling your name for the record, please.
Joanna Parker-Lenz, 16 Ridge Terrace, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Can you spell your name? Sorry to ask you.
J-O-A-N-N-A, P-A-R-K-E-R dash L-E-N-T-Z.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I think that overall, when I had the privilege to represent Nadeja in viewing these buildings, I just wanted to be known that when Nadeja approached me about this site, it was to preserve and continue what was there. And when we went through the buildings, it was more of an excavation, like, oh, my goodness, this doesn't work. And it was not possible to do what Nadeja originally wanted to do. Nadeja is living in a historical home. She is one of the most kind-hearted and historically correct person that I've ever met in my entire career in real estate. She doesn't believe in destroying places that don't deserve to be there. And what she had in mind for those spaces, unfortunately, when we brought inspectors and people through, it just didn't work out. And it was heartbreaking to watch someone like Nadeja to experience what she couldn't actually make come to fruition. So the fact that we've evolved into a place to bring in modern architecture and new buildings in, it is almost contrary to where my friend wanted to be. I appreciate and so much want to support everything that she does, because I think that from perspective of like someone who's known Nadeja for so long as a friend, as a client, as a book house supporter, I don't think anything that Nadeja does is unworthy of attention and support and honest movement forward positivity for our downtown. So I just want to be known that like from the beginning, Nadeja's vision might have been slightly different, and the way that we came about this scenario, she adapted. And I support everything she does because my family has grown up in the book house, my life surrounds the places that she supports, and, you know, the fundraising aspects of our downtown, Nadeja is always there to say, yes, I'm there. So I just want to be very positive about what Nadeja Nicole and her husband and family do. So that's really just simply where I'm here to say, I'm in. Whatever she does, I'm behind her.
Great. Thank you so much.
That's that. Thank you.
Okay, Nicole Cohen-Richter, you can join up. We'll have you sworn in.
Do you just raise your right hand, please? Do you swear affirm testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please, spelling your name.
Nicole Cohen-Richter, it's M. Lake Mary, I-C-O-L-E, Cohen, C-O-H-E-N, space, R-I-C-H-T-E-R. And my address is 34 Hobart Avenue in Short Hills.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. And so I'm just here again to echo all the wonderful things being said about Nadeja Nicole. My perspective is both as a customer and, you know, a resident who's proud to have a local bookstore, but also as a longtime board member of the Education Foundation in town, I just want to make a note to those who may not know that Nadeja has been a longtime supporter of our schools as well. And as one of the chairpeople of Rocktoberfest, she's been with us from the get-go, supporting that event in our organization. And I just want to say that, you know, knowing her and her generosity and her entrepreneurial spirit, I really trust what she's going to do with her next venture. And just wanted to be here to lend my support.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay, Igor V., you're back. We'll have you sworn in this time around. So you can go ahead and raise your right hand, and Erica, where are you in?
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address for the record, spelling your name, please.
Igor Vishnevetsky, I-G-O-R-V-I-S-H-N-E-V-E-T-S-K-Y, 180 Myrtle Avenue, Melbourne.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm going to say, unfortunately, not someone who's known Nadeja for a while, or, you know, I'm a deep friend. I'm just a customer and a resident in town. I went into the book house a few times with my kids, and we purchased books. So no deep personal relationship here. The one thing I wanted to say is, kind of, population growth and obsolescence are just natural things that happen in life in society. Our town's population has grown in the last 100 years. Homes get old. They need to be either restored or taken down, and new things need to be built. When I look at this project, I see progress. I see thoughtful design. And most importantly, I see someone in the community actually making a massive investment in the town. And that's a net positive for us, for all of us. I think it gives confidence to those of us that are new in town to do the same. And I am myself personally in support of this project. I also like the fact particularly that they're going to be smaller dwellings here, because whoever the residents are, whether they're families, or it's, you know, an elderly person, or a couple, or someone who's coming in new in town, it's a different type of a variety of living that will exist here now that just did not exist before. I think that's a net positive for our town. Gives more people the ability to step in and join our wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And Kelly Davis, you should be with us. You can unmute and turn your camera on. We'll have you sworn in, too.
Do you swear affirm testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Davis, 23 Thackeray Drive in Short Hills. That's K-E-L-L-I-D-A-V-I-S.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
So I attended the meeting in January and reviewed all of the renderings and the documents. And I agreed with one of the presenters in January, who said that this timeless, modern design will elevate that area of the downtown. And so I did want to comment on that timeless, modern design. And I thought that was spot on. I also felt that the proposal and all the documents that I reviewed align with the downtown vision plan. So I was very impressed. Also, the idea that the plans took into account that even just like the setback of the schoolhouse building next door. So again, a lot of thoughtfulness was put in, and a lot of work was put into the design and this proposal. Lastly, again, I was really impressed by the sustainability report that was reported in January as well. So again, I'm very much in support for the proposal and the project and all that Nadeja has done with the book house is just the beginning. And again, I echo so much of the positive comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. At this point, there's nobody else with their hand raised, but if others from the public do want to have the opportunity to make any additional comments, or anybody who has not yet gotten to comment wants to, go ahead and raise hand. Okay, looks like I see another one. Okay, Kevin Wenzel, you should be joining up. If you're able to turn your camera on and unmute, we can have you begin.
You unmute.
Yep, once you unmute, we'll swear.
Just raise your right hand, please. You're muted again. Just raise your right hand, please. You muted again. Yeah, anytime you. Do you swear a firm testimony about to be given tonight's hearing to be the truth, hold true, cut by the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Wenzel, K E V I N W E N Z E L, 23 Thackeray Drive in Short Hills.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to reiterate, well, I just wanted to express my support for this project as well. There've been a lot of people on the call that have said things that are absolutely spot on, as far as I'm concerned regarding the scale of the project, the aesthetics of the project. Been friends with Nadja and her family since they moved to Short Hills quite a while back. But besides that, I think that Melbourne should welcome any project that brings more people to the downtown area, whether that be to live, to work, or to shop and dine. And I think this project sort of incorporates all three of those elements. So just wanted to, to lend my support for this project as well.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wenzel. Okay, I don't see any additional comments, although, okay. Rich Keller, I think you had you possibly gotten bumped in your back end. I see you had your hand raised there for a moment, Rich. Okay, okay, sorry about that. All right. Happy with your Zoom. Okay. Last chance for any additional comments or public testimony tonight. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony portion and bring it back to members of our planning board for thoughts, reactions, and comments. And Mr. Bear, do you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Beth. I think that this is a question for Ed. This is a procedural question, if I could. I just want to understand, what is, what has it become the practice of this board requests from the applicant to restrict the use of their site? Irrespective of the fact that the applicant agreed to restrict the use of their site, what has it become the practice of this board or the board's planner to ask an applicant to restrict the use of their site? Because don't we have a zoning ordinance that essentially guides us and provides those, those restrictions? So why, why should we be doing that? I believe maybe we're somewhat overstepping our boundary there. If I'm wrong, okay. But I, I don't understand procedurally why we would be doing that when we do have a zoning ordinance.
As I, I think your point is well taken, Mr. Bear. I, as I understood it, the concern related to the parking variance that was being granted, and I believe, at least as I had the, the condition, the potential condition that we were talking about, that if there was any change of, of, into a different permitted use that would exceed the parking space requirements of one for every 200 square feet, that the applicant would have to come back before the board. That's the way I was planning to address that issue. I think the point with regard to, to uses, you are 100% right. If there's a zoning ordinance, those permitted uses, there may be restrictions in terms of having to come back before the board. This board, Board of Adjustment, depending upon what they're, what they may be seeking. But I, I don't think that it is appropriate for us to limit the, the uses beyond those which are set forth in his own ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate that. Other thoughts or questions? Before we kind of dig into the, the meat of it. Okay.
Oh, wait, Beth.
I'm sorry, Diane. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
I just want to comment on some of the comments that I like what Ms. Reddick said. Innovate, renovate. Another resident had said progress. And it is really nice to know that a resident who does live in town, already has a business in town, is looking to make, as the person said, a substantial investment. I also like that Mr. Keller, Mr. Zaltzman, and Kelly Davis referenced the vision plan. And unfortunately, RPM, who was conditionally approved this night, didn't even know we had a new vision plan. So I like that people are aware of that. I think that's really important because what we're trying to do downtown. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So I just want to bring up, Ed, we have both waivers and variances. I want to talk about how we handle both of those, just to make sure we are procedurally moving forward correctly.
I, I think if the board is so inclined to look favorably upon the application, it would be to grant preliminary and final site plan approval for the project as proposed, to grant the two variances that were requested. One related to the location of a sign above the first floor and the second, the parking variance. There were a number of waivers, and this was really the subject of testimony at our first hearing, but the waivers were delineated very carefully in our planner, Graham Pedder's report of December 31st, 2021. And, and I believe as I, as I looked at my notes, that the waivers that were requested, that, that the applicant requested a number of, a number of waivers that the board would be inclined, if they were going to proceed to approve this application, to grant those waivers, different obviously from variances. I had a, a, a number of conditions, and there may be more as I go through my notes in more detail in preparing the resolution. But they related to the parking requirements where there would be no public parking, the parking would be assigned as Mr. Keller indicated, three spaces for the residential, six spaces for the office, and one extra space. All of the utilities would be underground to the extent allowed by the utility companies. The building sign on the, on the side of the building would be eliminated. They withdrew on the request for that, and there's going to be no sign there. I have a note here as a condition that the streets, that existing street trees that are not shown on the rendering will be maintained. That each retail unit will have an individual bathroom facility.
And a, and a street number.
And a street, and a street number. As I noted to, to Mr. Bear in response to his question, and, and this would occur anyway, but I think it's appropriate to put it in as a condition that any change of use, change of, of permitted use, which would generate parking that is in excess of one space for every 200 square feet, require the applicant to apply to the appropriate board for approval. I don't know if we talked about this, but it came up, I believe Ms. Nevis actually alluded to it in her question, although it wasn't exactly her question, and that is storage on balconies. I recall that when we had another application involving a residential project above a commercial project in the downtown, that we imposed a condition that there would be no storage permitted on balconies beyond what I'll call balcony furniture. I don't recall exactly how we worded it in that resolution, but I would ask the board to consider whether they would want to impose that condition in this case as well, because these are residential balconies. Some, at least one of which may be visible. And, and in any event, I suppose depending upon the perspective, you would, you would be able to see it.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'm, I'm happy to, to take in any that the board members may have.
Great. Did any board members have any additional conditions that they recall hearing that, that was not just captured in Mr. Boozak's list? And, and I just wanted to ask also, I see, I see Mark your hand. Eileen, is there any zoning with respect to permitted uses or, or balconies specifically to the end? And I do recall we did have an application where we, we did impose restrictions on, you know, sort of using balconies as storage that, that were street-facing? Like in terms of maintenance of property, is that, is there anything captured in the zoning?
Not in the zoning, no.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Mark. You go first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, somebody had referenced during testimony a sustainability report and how this comported to the sustainability report. Does, is anybody aware of a new sustainability report that's been sanctioned by either, you know, the state or the township?
I don't know, Mr. Sirfalo. I might ask you if perhaps I just referenced the environmental impact statement or stormwater management report, but if you believe there was any sustainability report submitted?
There was a checklist reported and there was certainly testimony about sustainability, sustainability features. I'm not aware of any new township report.
Yeah, somebody had referenced it and I, and I, I don't know, I just thought it was interesting that there was some kind of relationship between the report and the, the architectural design with the entire package. And I was just thinking, when I think in terms of sustainability, and it may be a question, like how many EV stations will you have? Is there green infrastructure engineering incorporated to capture some of the stormwater in it, you know, in a green way and LEED certification? I think I, that question was answered, that you have no intention of doing a LEED certification. So I, I was just curious about the nexus between the sustainability report that I heard, which could have been, I don't know, and, and just some of the things that are referenced in the master plan related to sustainability.
Yep, that's, that's a good question. I, I don't know that I, that I know the answer, but I.
My, my notes had just a, a comment about sustainability elements, but I don't have any independent items listed on there. I'm looking quickly at the minutes because the architect was the one, his authority, who testified about sustainability. So let me take a quick look at the minutes and see if there's anything.
Thanks. And while you're looking, maybe we'll take the question from Gaston. And Ed, if we can come back to you if you do see specifically the references that. Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Gaston.
I just had a question on the, the loading zone marking. I, I do think like we, we're still, you know, we, we have a parking problem. And I think we should be encouraging it. We have a new ordinance that tells us we need to have an, an off-street loading zone. And I'm not sure if that ordinance requires it to be marked as well. But I do feel like because we already think that they're not going to be used, it definitely should be designated to encourage that.
Great, thanks. Graham, do you know offhand, are they required to be marked, like denoted as a loading zone? I, I believe we just recently saw that draft ordinance come, is the loading zone, are you understanding my question?
Yeah, I understand your question. Yeah, I mean, it should be functionally for the space, it should be marked that it is a loading space. You know, Martha may have some more insight as far as, you know, what needs to be marked. But there should be some indication that loading may occur, particularly in that space, since it is shared with the egress from the parking area.
Perhaps we can impose a condition that would say that the, the loading area shall be appropriately designated to the satisfaction of the township engineer. If, if, if Ms. Callahan is willing to take on that, that responsibility. Candidly, I don't know if it's an engineering issue or a planning issue, but I think one of the professionals for the board or for the township should be, should be looking at it because I, I believe Mr. Keller's testimony in response to the question that Mr. Halpert raised, was, was that because it functions as an egress lane? And it's not solely and exclusively utilized for loading? The parking will have to be a little bit more innovative, I guess, so that people recognize that it's also an egress lane as well as a loading space.
Yeah, I don't think we could put a sign up that says loading area or loading space because it is an egress lane. And for the most part, that's what it's going to be used as, but maybe pavement markings or something could, we could do something like that so that everyone's aware that that's where you should be parking when you're loading or unloading.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Does that work, Gaston?
Yep, that's perfect.
Great. Thank, thank you, Martha, for the recommendation. Ed, were you successful in finding any further architectural testimony?
No, I, when I looked at the minutes, I did not see anything in detail about the sustainability issue.
Okay. So it sounds, Mr. Sirfalo, you, you, the checklist as completed was the, the information that was provided that, that may have been, what was alluded to.
I certainly recall testimony beyond the checklist. I just don't have my notes.
Okay. Okay. Any additional questions or items that were not including at this point? Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion on this application? I'm sorry, did I cut you off, Mr. Boozak?
No, no, I was just about to say what you said, but you beat me to it, so.
Okay. Yep. So, and if anybody would like to make a motion, they would want to make it including the, the granting preliminary and final site plan approval, including the two variances as stated, and three outstanding waiver requests, I guess, I, we could say all outstanding waiver requests and conditions as set forth by Mr. Boozak throughout this discussion.
I would be pleased to make that motion as stated by chairperson Zoll.
I second.
Great, that was Gaston who seconded, Eileen.
Gaston Halpert?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, it's not here. Mark Matzel?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
SuJafa Sean?
Is that they are muted?
Yes.
Diane Thalagla?
Yes.
Shreemini Vijay?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Just want to say with appreciation for the application, the process, and our board enthusiastic, yes, for getting through this application and looking forward to this addition to our downtown. Thank you all. And thank you, Mr. Sirfalo, for leading us through your.
On behalf of the applicant, thank you.
Welcome. We have no additional items of business. As we mentioned earlier at the beginning of the meeting, application 21009, which we would have been beginning now, is going to be instead held on March 2nd or discussed on March 2nd. So with that, I make a motion to adjourn our meeting for the evening. Does anybody second?
Second.
Miss Miggins, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and with that, we will close the evening's meeting. Thank you and be safe.
Good night.
Good evening.